You ready Steve? Ready? Good evening, everybody. We're here for a, uh, we're with trustees work session meeting. It's six o'clock, it's Tuesday, May 5th. Take our hat off, we're having a pledge of allegiance and being started. Pledge of allegiance, specified in the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. We'd like to have a moment of silence to honor the military firefighters, sheriff deputies, and road workers as they serve our community here abroad. Okay, uh, thank you. Can we have roll call, please? Tracy?
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McQuire.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Okay, uh, first thing we want to talk about is old business. Looks like we want to have an RFP review and discussion on some contracts we've won, or RFPs we've put out. Steve, you will take care of that?
Yes, sir. Getting any trustees, fiscal officer, and prior chief, and public coming in a little bit? Before you, and also sent to you by email twice, you have copies of the RFP proposals that were received on all three RFPs. The roadway repairs and paving, the tree and brush removal services, and vacuum truck and stormwater cleanup. You received three bids, one from Brewer Blacktop, one from Ray C., uh, Ray, letter C, Hensley Inc., and one from J&amp;A Construction on the roadway repairs and paving. At the RFP, you received one bid, which was Joseph Tree Service. And on the vacuum truck and stormwater cleanup, you received one from Champion Cleaning Specialist. So, uh, the discussion I wanted to have with you tonight is what do you want to do with these three RFPs? Do you want to move forward with them? Do you want to move forward with all of them, some of them? And then zero in on the road one because there's a proposal for, I mean, the RFP had multiple locations of repair and the total cost of what these projects are proposals at. And do you want to do all those project locations of repair? Do you want to do some of them? Do you want to distribute and hire a couple companies and let two companies work on the list of repairs? But, um, but regardless, I have to know from you trustees about how you want to proceed.
Did you get the availability? So if we award these, say tomorrow, what, what's the availability? When can these guys start work?
Brewer, Brewer Blacktop says they could begin work by June 1. Ray Helsley said they'd have to do it in different shifts, uh, but it would be done, you know, midsummer. And J&amp;A Construction said they could start within the next 20 days or shorter. What held up, what, what would have held everybody up is the asphalt plants were not open. Asphalt plants have now opened in this area. So, you know, the companies are starting to do their, their contracted work. And, and, and so we've got to get in quick. If you, you know, you can't put this off. If you put it off, we may not be looking at this till late summer, fall, or even next year.
Do you have a recommendation?
Well, you've not had work done in a recent time of Brewer and Ray C. Hensley. You did use J&amp;A Construction last year. I have seen the work of all three, all three are top notch. It's really, you know, the, if you look at the proposals, J&amp;A has the strongest. But at the same time, you know, you have the opportunity of picking more than one to do the work. You know, it's just a matter of what you want to do.
We guess like.
Steve, go back over that. You said that, uh, R and A, J&amp;A was the strongest.
Yes.
What you said about the other two?
The other two are just as strong. But, uh, one, the Hensley group, you can look at their bids. They gave so much for crack seal, so much per square mile for, they didn't actually address the actual repair centers, uh, you know, that we detailed on our RFP. But the bid says that they would, you know, take care and repair every one of those locations. But they did not detail it on their, their proposal. So you have to, to answer your question, well, you got to look at the proposals themselves. I'm going to go through the streets that were on the, uh, RFP and that these three do address. To crack seal, uh, roads in the Tucson Drive area, Rock Court, Clovis Court, Alamo Court, Birdland Drive, Big Bend Drive, Accident Park Drive, in the township section only, Rosemont Drive, and Creek Size Drive, again, the township section only. Mastic seal, seam repair, uh, major problems, as those who know the Road Western Front, Weaver Road, um, from Hempel to Manning, there's over 200 joints to repair. That's, they bid the entire thing to do the seam and mastic seal. The third part would be spot repair, deep patch. Uh, we went and identified all the deep patch asphalt overlay, uh, areas. This is not completely blacktopping those roads, but it's taking out all the holes that are there and fixing them. In the Blick, the Bricker Platte, um, there's multiple spots in, on, on, uh, on Bricker Drive, so it's 650 square feet total of patch. Longcrest, Mater, Bricker, I said that before, Knox Avenue. Another section of Bricker Platte, about 22,000 square feet. Longcrest, Mater, uh, another section on Bricker, Knox. Holland Avenue, Millen Philin area, about, there's only one hole there on Holland. Colgate, um, Fisk, Hanover, um, Colgate, uh, south of Fisk, Liscum Drive, uh, that is the pavement overlay, 8100 square feet in the area of Coulson, Timshaw, Erickson, and Vanguard. That's the section coming from Route 4. As you go into the township, uh, uh, area where the city of Dayton stopped pavement at the Dayton line, and then it goes up to the city of Dayton incorporation. That area there needs major, uh, address. And that's one of your major entries to the township and exits from the township to Route 4. Derby Road, Millen Philin areas, 500 square feet near Hackett. Derby Road asphalt, 3100 square feet from Infirmary to Kimmel, various areas. And I'll come back to those two points in a minute. Birdland Avenue, Millen Phil in front of, uh, 5289, that hole there. Hempel Road, Eastbound Lane, 200 square foot, approximately, as you approach Weaver. Calumet overlay, about 2100 square feet in different spots. Mile Road, the Bridge Decking, that's, uh, the Mile Road section that's west of Snyder Road, about 2,000 square feet. Why I want to go back to the Derby. You applied last year for issue two funding. With COVID and things, the state of Ohio doesn't know if there's going to be an issue two program in 2020. So we have a meeting set up for the 20th of May for the people on the board, or the selection board, and I'm one of those members. I'll know more for you guys about whether there'd be any application at all for Derby. So you have to address some of those Derby problems this year because you just can't wait. And I realize that means if you get the issue two next year, year after, you go and tear up what you just did. But we have no way of knowing what's going to happen. The state doesn't know, they're down almost, I think you even had a report about that.
Health is 776 million, 20% of the budget.
20% of the budget's cut already, just like lost in the state. And that's all departments. So it's concerned. So that's why I threw Derby in on the RFP. But I think this is a comprehensive list. We've got both the country, what you call rural transition, and then the neighborhoods all included to the best of our ability to try to at least do some repairing every neighborhood. It's not going to solve every pothole, and it's not, you know, so we've got to have our road department doing that, following up on those areas that we're not going to do in this program. But, yeah, all three, I, I'd like to make a full recommendation, but at the same time, I, 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 I need you guys to help me with that decision because, you know, you, you live here, you've been here longer than me. And, you know, you know, I, I do, I do have done, you did work with J&amp;A last year, I do have worked in another township with him now, but also you have the right to choose who you want.
I don't have the cost breakdowns. I don't think I made that copy. Give it, give it to me or quit, or is it totals?
The totals. You got to be there. Like I said, uh, I'll start with Ray Hensley. They gave you pricing based on so many square yards. So it's a dollar eighty-seven square yard for chip seal, 220 per square yard for chip seal using the MC 3000 liquid asphalt. Crushed stone, a dollar ninety-seven for strip patching with HF RS 2P, which is the state mid product, eighth stone. Strip patching with MC 3000 and number eight stone at $2.30. Skin patching at $9.40 per gallon. Crack seal type two, 2.64 per pound of crack seal material, comes in a cube and they melt it down. Crack seal type four, 2.84 per pound. Mastic is quoted per job, so you didn't get a price on the mastic. They just said quoted per job. Full depth reclamation, which means they go in and take the initial asphalt out and then back lay. It is also quoted per job. So Ray Hensley did not address per crack seal location. J&amp;A Construction. The crack sealing part. You have two options. One, you can crack seal just the road, or two, you can crack seal the road and the curb, where you have major grass, or grass grow up and deterioration of your curb. It's 11,125 to do all that crack seal without the curb, 15,000 to do it with the curb. And that is the crack seal. The spot repaired, the total on that is 81,174. And on their proposal, they have it broken out per location. And your final one, which is your Brewer Blacktop. The entire project, 136,000. Yeah, 136,000. So, so you're looking at a hundred plus thousand dollars to do it all. It's your choice about what you guys might want to do.
So we got one bid at 96, one at 136, and the others basically T and M.
Right. You know, you guys, I went back through some of the meeting complaints from different residents that have been, and then good points and not complaints or complaints. And you hear a lot about the grass growing up through your cracks. And so, you know, there's a way to kill it with spray, you know, that way. We can do some of that. But if you're already back there taking care of cracks in the middle of the road, you might as well take where the water runs along the curb. So my, at least my recommendation there is to go with whoever does the work for you and go ahead and have a crack sealed up, you know, including the curb. That is completely sealed and you protected that section or that neighborhood of roads until you got money down the road to go back and over, you know, repave or, um, where they come in and they reclaim, take it out and put new overlay in. You also, you know, this doesn't address anything, as you guys know, but it doesn't address any of the broken curbs and the, and the, and where the paving over the years has reached the top of the curb. We're going to have to deal with that all another year. So, um, I, I, you know, I, we just got to get started. We can't miss this window of opportunity in that COVID-19. Otherwise, we, by this time, we wouldn't have been out of the mix for anybody till next year.
I suggest J&amp;A Construction. And do the seal, including the curb.
Okay, let's put it in the meeting. Let's put it in the meeting.
Yeah. You heard, you hear that, Steve? Sorry, did you hear that?
Okay.
You told me to put the meeting, suggest J&amp;A and what they proposed, plus with the curb.
Okay, so you want a resolution written for that?
We'll do that, we'll do that in the meeting, yes.
Okay.
Tracy, you, you got some resolution numbers, we can start pugging in. You want to do this? This is the paving or road services.
Do we have a resolution for that already?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, I got them written down.
It's going to be the third one.
You want vendor contract track for Rover Cam service services, and then the 35.
Zero three five?
Yes.
Okay.
The only other, only one, Mike, that we had not, you didn't discuss, we talked about the spot repair, the crack seal. Weaver Road, as we talked about, that's that mastic seal and trying to get rid of those joints.
Yeah.
There's two sections, as you know. You know, you, you can, you can do all of it this year, uh, which is a total of $29,700, or you could split it and see how one section works and then come back the second year. I'm just thinking about money, you know, but, but that's up to you. If you want it all done, it'll be finished from Hempel down to May.
Is that J, is that J doing that too?
J&amp;A. That was their third bid, very, you know, part of their proposals.
And do half, see what's like.
So what's that add to the total?
It adds, uh, let's see, your, your totals right now is 15,000 crack seal with the curb, 29,700 with the, I'm sorry, 81,174 for the spot repair. And then this mastic seal project on, on Weaver would be 29,700. So it'd be half of that. You'd save at least, say, 14,000, you know, 900.
Let's try it out.
And you guys, when they start doing that road, all of you, I'll tell you on those days, if you can get some time off work to go out and watch them do this, so we save that road. Because if you haven't been on that road lately, I know you have.
Yeah.
You, every seam. And so we did some research and it's not a, it was never original concrete roadway underneath there. Sometimes I'll do that when you pave over concrete, the interstate has those problems with seams. We don't know why that road is like that the entire way, every five, six, 10 feet, whatever, you've got a seam that's paved. And as water gets underneath it, you're getting, you're going to get worse of a problem. I know you don't have a lot of population out there, but it's still, it's a, it's an investment that the people put into that road, you need to save it. So.
Just do half.
Do half, so part of that resolution would be half.
Yeah. We talked about roadways, like 70, there's two, one section they're redoing, there's a section they'll widen. They're taking interstate roads these days, no dawdies, they're taking concrete out, there's a section of 70 near the, closer to Columbus, and putting asphalt in.
Should they get rid of that base that keeps?
And, and, and so I've been, I've done some investigation, asked why, because they also did, they did a test two years ago down, right by 275, Cincinnati. They're grinding it, heating it up, and they're putting it right back down on the ground. And they did this, a test, and it worked good. They, one of the problems with concrete is the seams you spoke about. Every, every joint is a basket, a steel basket that's made that has the rods in it, and the concrete's meant to do this, but it does this also. And you get that bump of the interstate, on the concrete interstates. And to repair that is a sunburn with asphalt, so they put asphalt down, and then it gets bad, they shave off two inches, put it back down again, how much sheep that is to maintain?
Yeah, the reclaim.
You'll see, you'll see the DOTs across the country switching to asphalt interstates. It'll happen.
Well, they got to do something, otherwise that constant seam breakup is a problem. So.
Okay.
Okay, well, that takes care of that part of it. Thank you, gentlemen, and, um, we'll, you know, talk about it in the meeting, okay?
As far as the, uh, vacuum services and the tree and brush, we're going to hold off on that guys for now, or? The other part, the two, the two VFPs or RFPs?
It's warming through the meeting. We got single vendors.
None of, none of them have trustees, none of them have actual jobs to do. They were strictly, get a vendor on, on board that we can call instead of somebody saying you, you know, didn't do an RFP and you don't have a certified vendor with their insurance and all that. That was why, that's what we ended up with those two, because we didn't put out their certain specific jobs. We strict, we did not. We just wanted to know what their hourly rate was and, and could we find a competitive hourly rate, you know? So at two in the morning, we can call and we know that you trustees approved that company to come out instead of some neighbor that says they know what they're doing.
I wonder why they can't get local, I mean, so the stormwater is out of Blue Ash in Cincinnati, and other guys out of Dublin, Ohio, why we can't get somebody a little closer to?
I don't know, we ran ads both, we ran it on the local contractors' system, we ran it through Jobs Ohio, they have a, a bid system, we ran it through Ohio Aggregate Association and the Dayton Daily News, and, you know, and, and this is what we, and our website, this is what we ended up with.
Okay.
So I, I don't know either, either party that submitted, but.
Yeah.
You know, but, but at the same time, it resolves an issue for your staff at two or three, four, I mean, as an example, a weekend, you don't have to go try to open up the Yellow Pages and find somebody or, you know, or some people don't think that you picked the right contractor, or you could have got a cheaper from.
Well, I don't see this, the stormwater being a rush deal that you do on the weekend, you can do that Monday morning. And the trees, I'll tell you, just push those out of the way, take it back, go, push those out of the way over the weekend and then.
Sure.
You know, take care of it first of the week. I don't see either one of them being a rush deal. I'd most rather wait and see, can't get somebody closer to.
So we got to rebid it?
Well, I'd be, I don't know.
That's the hard part, which is fine, it's no big deal, we can put it back out again. I, I, I see.
Local, I like, I like to stay local.
I wanted local too, and they didn't come in.
Given the specialized nature of back truck, that makes sense if a guy has got to roll out of Blue Ash, the tree, we should be able to find local for that. Let's say rebid the tree, tell them, let's put this other one in the meeting and see how it does. Steve, you on board with that?
We say word.
Okay, we're going to rebid the trees.
Yeah, they talked about it in the meeting. Okay, so, uh, your, your little business, what you want?
So with, with, we're going to need resolutions for both, we got to clear the, one resolution, make sure you work, we got to vote out a rebid in the meeting. And then vote whether or not we want to, uh, accept this back truck bid. So we're going to need resolutions. Wouldn't that be 36 and 37, Tracy?
No. Okay, which ones are you talking about? There, there.
There'd be, there'd be resolutions, the trustees are going to propose them.
On the agenda, they're in order, I wrote they're on the agenda, so.
These would be the ones.
These are new ones?
Yes.
So it would be 39 and 40, very new, none of us on the agenda, right?
Are they all on this agenda?
Are they all on this? The back truck one is just before the number 35, so is that 34?
Yes.
So, so the back truck would be 34. We need a new one to rebid the trees.
Rebid the tree, but there's a tree and brush plane, that's not it?
They're not accepting that bid, so we have to do a new one.
So we're not going to use that, have that, um?
You want, you, you.
I'm just saying, if we're not going to use.
Yeah, I guess we, we can change it, change that one.
Do the same number, do you choose a different one?
Yeah.
Would you just get in?
So that would be 36, so you'd use the same number.
Okay.
Okay. And I only have one other thing concerning roads that I like to talk to you guys trustees about. We received the report back from the county engineers about Calumet Drive and the repair of Calumet. I sent you all a, a copy of the Calumet, or the engineer's report. They apologized that the COVID-19 slowed them down in their response to us, we would have sooner. They have recommendations there of what they recommend, how to repair the pipe. Before I go any further, I want to explain to you that since about 2017, I've been in conversation with the county engineer, Paul Bruner, trying to get, you know, exchange of roads to a curb. Calumet needs some major work, the township doesn't have the money to do it, trying to get the county to take Calumet Drive in exchange for two country roads out west for the same linear miles. It's less expensive for you to maintain country roads than it is Calumet Drive, with all the cross culverts and the drainage systems that are in Calumet. So being that said, regardless, I wanted you to know in, in advance that, you know, whatever we do here has to be done, at least with a professional eye on it. So if we do indeed get the engineer to say yes, uh, they'll take the road. If we repair it in some other fashion, thinking that we know what we're doing and try to do what we're doing, and we do it wrong, it could keep the engineer from wanting the road. So, but the recommendations are there, the before pipe and the after pipe. The before pipe is what you have now, the flows, couple pictures, and then the flow, and the elliptical pipe that they suggest after. I asked the engineer if their department would be interested in putting in a bid to do the work, and the answer was no, not with their major cuts they have to make as a county. After all this COVID has happened, they do not have the manpower nor the money to do it. So that being said, uh, I'd like to ask trustees for the permission to put an RFP out, to see what we're looking at cost wise, because no one can give me a cost, uh, so far that we've spoken to. I'd like to do an RFP to see what it would cost to do that, that permanent repair of that road. And, and at that point, the trustees have the full right to say, that's too much, we have to go a different route. There's no commitment to any of those people that would put in an RFP, but at least you guys will know what the price is and what we're, we're looking at to fix it. I worry, with the Soil and Water District also met me out there and looked at the creek to the south and how it drains. And I want to make sure.
South?
Right, the field goes north to that tile, and the field fully drains from that, south of there to the north. Then it goes to those head walls.
The road runs to the south, right?
Huh?
The road runs to the south.
Right.
So east side or west side?
The west side. That field dumps all its volume according to soil and water, all of it goes into that head wall and underneath that road, and then back southeast through to the fairgrounds. So, you know, the, the county administrator and I have been talking about what to do about the creek that's backed through there because it's all grown up and how we can try to get it all cleaned out as part of this project. But I have no idea what the cost is to fix that road. That's completely taking the tile out, putting the new tile in, and then putting the pavement and packing it back. So with an RFP, you three will know exactly what that costs.
Who would do it in-house?
That might be an option, but you don't know what the cost is even to do it in-house.
Well, if it's an RFP, I mean, I priced it elliptical pipe, I've laid miles of elliptical pipe, and I use two layers, right, I use two layers, because you don't start with her on it.
Well, it's, the picture that you can see where the two pipes have separated, so we got a separation in the pipe, and, uh, and that water pressure came up and. So we got a separation in the pipe, and that water pressure came up and just melted away everything on the outside of the pipe. So regardless of who does it, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, can we run an RFP so we know what the cost is, or at least what we're looking at? And then decide at that point with staff, because right now we only have one part-time employee, you know, to do it. So we don't upset or ruin our chance to give the road away to, to the county engineer.
At the tail end of the meeting, last meeting, didn't you bring out a resolution that wasn't on the agenda that hired some guys, when we've got guys starting here like tomorrow?
Probably no sooner than June 1st. And by that time, we can have this RFP out there, you know, rolling and then come right back in. I'm all about doing whatever we can to save money, but I also want to make sure it's fixed right according to DOT standards and then, you know, for that whole thing.
Yeah, so you take it out.
Because you did it last year, you know, our road crew did, and unfortunately, the water washed it. Our problem's away, so we're back here at the table a year later. I'm trying to prevent it from happening.
You take existing pipe and you try to make a joint under the road like that, you're not going to get a good joint. You take, you dig the whole thing out and you put new pipe in the ground, you're going to get your joints together, you're going to seal it, you're going to get, compact your bottom, put your pipe in, backfill around it. If it's that big of a deal, put liquid fill around it, put liquid grout around it. If you have 50 or 100 liquid grout, that's cheap. Well, you could simply put a head wall on the end because you can back it up to the head wall.
Yeah, change that head wall. Yeah, that makes sense.
You got to change head wall.
But, you know, they, you know, do we go south with the head wall in front of the farm and go straight across?
Do that today, dude. Do that today.
Yeah, right, so.
I have a question.
You do that yourself.
Calumet, Calumet Lane, Township.
Yeah, the whole thing.
That road's gotten busy.
I know.
And I think the people using this cut through.
They probably are. And that's the other concern, the traffic count is up according to the engineer.
Cut through for what?
Cut through, either they got to go down to the connector or they got to go up to Union Road, so they have to cut through there after.
Oh, okay.
So.
Yeah, so.
So if I can run an RFP for 30 days, that'll be about time your staff is hired and onboard, we can make, you trustees can say, hey, we can do this for half of that.
Yeah.
But what's, but what's the half? I don't know.
In the meantime, we need more gravel or steel laid there because it's.
We put gravel out there last Friday, but we packed it in, but we wouldn't put some more here.
It was out there, Sunday. I was just here a couple days ago at the time.
Yeah, but we just did it.
Yeah. Well, you're going in and out there today, I mean, it's where your office is, so you keep an eye on it.
Yeah, we do. Ford lady one day, and I thanked her, she come up on the leaf blower and she blew the rocks off of the road and got in a car, because I just wanted to help out. I'm like, thanks. So if it's okay, I'd like, you know, if it's okay, trustees, of course, you got to tell me in a regular meeting, but, you know, I'll ask you for approval of just putting the RFP out there for the repair.
Not committed at that point.
Not, you're never committed to an RFP until you decide what you do. That's, that's the difference between an RFQ and an RFP. RFQ is request for quotes. And you have to pick the best of best, lowest or best bid.